Really?
Amazing.
Okay, I'm gonna watch for that next year.
It's special.
Chocolate change power.
Kind of like three pieces of heaven all mixed together. It's pretty good.
I want to, I go into the business, like just put city of Crestwell.
No, if you don't have a business, you don't have a business.
Okay. Prove.
Hi, how are you?
I'm all right, how are you?
In the same boat.
I'm here.
I think other. To just say.
Ready for the snowstorm?
I, I, all I'm saying is I'm ready for the second winter. The spring has bypassed us, so we're good.
We're supposed to start baseball, like, the 12th, and I don't know how, if it's gonna be raining in the snow.
You'll be fine.
We have games April 1st.
They're little boys, they can play in the weather.
You just never know. It's that snow at the end of April.
They're like, well, you're just gonna have to play through it, or don't, you know, I'm like, no, we'll try and play through it as long as there's no lightning. If there's lightning, I gotta call them, but ultimately, it's first, of course, first through third graders, the rookie minors.
Where are they playing?
Here in Crestwell, it's Crestwell's Babe Ruth.
At the middle school?
Yeah.
Ah.
Well, we have five teams on the one field, so we're still navigating the scheduling and all that other fun stuff.
I wish you'd made any help, let me know.
We are, well, I think the, the new area director's talking with, I think it's Brandon, because the other side of that field, we could fit another field right there. So, I'm willing, you know, to donate some money from the business, and everybody else is trying to pay for the fundraiser, so, like, right there, that would be super helpful for, because the girls' sample family would have a very good field.
I wish I could scrim through the money to get the field that's right by Second Street. That would be awesome.
Are they asking a lot?
They're asking developer prices.
Yeah, because they're probably thinking somebody will come around and put a bunch of apartments and make a bunch of money.
Except that.
They gotta wait, sir.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
You're like, I can kind of control that, so, you self-improve. Just bang your eye and then drop yourself.
That's right.
We'll pretend that you're kidding. For gone costs, those are tax deductible.
Right? Yeah, because there isn't a lot of land. After that meeting, I looked around like a dog, barking stuff. Right, there's, even if we had, all the money in the world was nowhere to put, zero places to put it.
Yeah, because we've grown out to our boundaries in most areas. So, we're gonna have to jump and add some more.
We have such a cute little community. I didn't realize how cute it was until I saw that picture that Kyle posted from the plane, when he, not everybody had Harry, but if he showed the pictures of like the lake with only the green and stuff, the first, like, time I really looked at Crestwell. It's so cute, it's kind of like nestled in the middle.
Everybody can every decipher.
It's really cute.
We got so many kudos for how we handled that ice storm. Yeah, it was just like, wow. Yeah, this community pulled together.
I agree, I agree.
It's so amazing. My house has one power company, and the house right next door has, it has power.
Yeah, we have three different power country companies here.
Which, which, why would you have, I think it was US, they had to replace 130 pools and 118 of them were in Crestwell, I was like, they don't even have a market.
And I thought, first station was down. Lane Electric had like six, maybe it was, they had like 600 pools down. And they lost a substation, and all of the lines coming into the substation, and, I mean, they had to start from scratch. So, anybody who had Lane Electric had to wait a long time for listeners to see. But yeah, overall, you know, everybody looked in on their neighbors to pick their.
Pacific Power had nine out of ten people that were retiring in the area. Told, I told my wife.
Yeah, they were the first ones back up.
I thought they were just pretty awesome.
I had to tone them down a bit.
There you go. I'm on the wall for the universe. And so, still, I would keep my phone in my pocket if my phone won't break, but if it does, then I need to step away, that's what I'm gonna do.
You might have to leave, leave, we're just gonna take a phone call.
Depending on the outcome of the phone call, maybe you just send out like an emergency alert or whatever.
Know that they have that 24-hour.
But if there's, like, you probably have an email from me last Thursday, although you didn't know that it was from me on Thursday. Right here in Crestwell. Yep. So, whenever we send out, like, emergency alerts to the, like, the 30,000 people, um, there's always somebody who's, he types it up, and that might be me this week, but either way, I just wanted you to know.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Good evening, and welcome to the Crestwell City Council Work Session, February 26, 2024. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming tonight. We start with the mayor's report, and my report tonight is an encouragement to the council to help me recruit for the Budget Committee. We started the year with two vacancies, and now we have three, because manager Amber and I received an email, I think it was yesterday, from Shaimon Mickelson, who's been on for several years, that he is moving out of state and needed to resign effective immediately. So, we're down three Budget Committee members, and I've been talking to lots of folks and have had several people say, oh, I'll fill out an application, but until Grace alerts me, we're still down three with no applications at this point. So, Budget Committee convenes in April with training sometime during that month ahead of time, so at the latest, we need to appoint Budget Committee members by the, by the meeting in April, the very latest, and requirements, they need to be citizens of Crestwell, and my own personal requirement is they need to have an interest in reading fairly thick documents, and have some grasp of lots of money, and come ready with questions to ask at Budget Committee meetings. So, we're looking for three citizens who would serve the appointments. Two of them are for appointments that would be for one year this term. One of them would be for an appointment that would run through the end of 2026. So, when you talk to folks, let them know there's a training time in April with Jim, and I don't know if that's a predetermined date, or if they can work something out with you.
I do have one on the schedule, I don't recall the date, I don't have it in front of me, but if, if they wanna work, work something out, then go for the budget training, I can also make, make arrangements for that as well.
Okay. So, could you shoot that date out to all of us, just so that when we're talking, folks, we can let them know when the date is, and then, and then a meeting April 30th on a Tuesday night, and two weeks later, May 7th?
That's the training, April 30th. Yeah, because the actual meetings don't start until May.
Oh, so the day will be May 14, and then 28?
That sounds about right, I'm looking at Jim.
Okay, no, that's all right, maybe you can just, between the two of you, shoot out the dates to us, for the training and for the two meetings, so that when we're talking to folks, and what they need to do is go online, application is available online, complete an application, turn it into gray.
And if they have any trouble, give C Hall a call, and we'll help them out.
Okay, wonderful. Questions about the, Stacy?
Just to confirm, there's, none of these can be at large, they're all within city limits?
Yes, Budget Committee is restricted to seven citizens and seven councillors.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, please help me recruit, we need three folks to serve. Okay, on to committee reports. First committee report, Administration and Finance, Alonso.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mayor. So, the Administration, Administration and Finance Committee, we met February 1st to work on the charge, charge that was given to us, and right off the bat, Shelley Clark was elected secretary for 2024, thank you for, for volunteering again, and the charge was to review the process and discuss it. So, the process, we'll go over the timeline first, and then I have a couple other things to share. The process is gonna be very much like last year, the process and timeline will be similar to last year for the municipal judge, and each councillor will attend court to evaluate the judge and fill out the evaluation form, and leave the form at court. We've found that that is very helpful, and if it's not left at court, then it can just be, and it needs to be turned in, the last day to attend court is September 11th, and if the evaluation form is not left at court, then it is due by September 12th, okay? At City Hall, of course, and the municipal judge's evaluation will take place October 14th, and presumably during executive session, okay? And then for the city attorney, we will receive the evaluation form and electronic version on September 9th, and that's due October 2nd, and we'll, there'll be plenty of times to remind us, you know, be reminding of all these dates and stuff, you don't have to write it all down. But so, the city attorney evaluation form will take place October 14th, and presumably as well during the executive session. For the city manager, we will receive the evaluation form in electronic version October 14th, due, and those are due October 30th, and as well, city manager evaluation will take place November 12th, presumably during executive session as well, okay? And then we had some discuss, a little bit of discussion about what worked, what went well, what didn't, and we have a couple of recommendations that we would like to share with you guys, of course, with consent of the council. One of them was the, we felt that we would like to include a little, kind of an assessment of the interactions with the city attorney, and that maybe manager Amber would share that with us during the evaluation, and I think, and then, and I, that was okay with you, right? I mean, you would provide that, because we felt that we, it would, because we have the updates, the quarterly updates, that we could still, felt like we could, a little more insight would be helpful, okay? So, the other one would be, was kind of, was supposed to happen last year, but it didn't, and that was my fault, that we were going to share the evaluations with the employees, and that didn't happen, but I'll inform manager Amber and city recorder Grace to do that, to include us when we, when we, they get them back, okay? And then, that's about it, that's about, so, any questions? Claire? Go ahead.
So, sharing evaluations, that means before we have our executive, executive session, they would have them coming into the meeting like the weekend before?
Yes, when, when they're all compiled, when we've all turned our evaluation form, completed evaluation forms, then they'll be shared with the employees, so that they can just review them prior to the evaluation.
Okay.
Okay? Sound good? Okay, well, that's, any other que, if there's no more questions, that's the end of my report.
Okay, Public Safety Committee, Nick, there a report?
We do not have a report this week, but we are meeting March 7th, so we will have a report next time, and be ready to go.
Okay, very good. Transportation and Public Works, Shelley?
Yes, we do have a report this week, so the big thing on the agenda for us, really the only thing that we were able to accomplish in the last month was we were able to meet with the water rate advisory committee, and a couple of, of exciting recommendations came out from that committee, so I'm gonna give you the two really easy ones, right? First is that, in looking at all the information, we are recommending a 0% increase for the water rate, and a 0% increase for the tough fee, right? So, no increases from there. The question really comes to our sewer rate, in terms of what it is that we are recommending, recommending, and so, I was just going back over the packet, and so, based off of the, and I'm assuming you all know, you're familiar with the DEQ and the, all the pieces that are, okay, great, I was gonna say, so I won't spend too much time talking about that, and so at this point in time, just based off of our conversation, there was no recommendation for a 0% increase within the sewer bill, and I think this is all information that we talked about last year as well, just in terms of there was going to be rate increases coming in the future as well, because we've got a pretty big bill coming up, and in order to be able to make the changes, we're gonna need to be able to fund those changes, so that we can get rid of our housing moratorium and all the things that, that we wanna do. So, so what we really looked at is a couple of different numbers, so we looked at a 3% for the sewer, a 5%, and a 9%, those were kind of the, the first three numbers that were thrown out, or first three percentages that were thrown out. The 3%, what that would mean is essentially, if we had increasing rates at 3% for fiscal year 2024, 2025, we would also have a borrowing capacity caps at 12 million, and our operations would run at a deficit, so if that's what, at a 3%, that's what that would mean. If we increased rates by 5% in fiscal year 2024, 2025, we would still, our borrowing capacity would be at 12 million, and our operations would be stable for future years. So, that's kind of the, as we, as we talked about it, kind of the lowest we would go in terms of a, a rate increase recommendation for sewer. And then we also talked about, we talked about the possibility of increasing rates by 9% in fiscal year 2024, 2025, that would also, again, the borrowing capacity would be at 12 million, and the reserves would be building for future, right? So, that's really kind of the range, is, is what we were talking about, is, or what we talked about as a group, is somewhere between 5 and 9% in terms of the recommendations that we were making. The, the bottom line, kind of the best idea about, like, so what does this mean on our bill, right? What is this overall increase that we're, we're recommending? So, because there's a number of things that go into the overall bill that everyone gets, so there's the public safety fees, there's the tough, there's, right, there's a number of different pieces that go into that, if we were at a 9% increase, the bill would go up, on average, again, between, so it would be at about $139.81 right now, it would go up with that 9% to $146. So, we're talking, again, with the highest increase, we're talking the difference of about $5 per month, which is not insignificant, but I wanted to give you, again, here's the big picture of what that would mean, and then the effect of a 5% sewer increase on, on the household bill, and again, this is on average, so again, it would go up between, from $139.81 to $143.49. So, again, that's about $3.50 per month, which again, is not insignificant, but that's, that's kind of the window that we were looking at. As we, as we talked about it, we agreed with the recommendation that there should be a 0% water rate increase and a 0% tough increase, so there was no, no pushback on that at all, because I think anytime we can have a 0% increase, that is welcome news. So, then our discussion really kind of fell into, how do we feel between that 5 and 9%? We had some, some individuals on our committee who felt very strongly about that 5%, that was not supported by the rest of the committee, and so, then we went back into discussion between, like, so where do we go from here? And so, what we talked about as a committee is that 9% feels all like a lot, right, and that that would probably be too much of an ask for our community. So, then we started looking at about a 7% recommended increase, and, and again, this is all approximate numbers, because every bill is a little bit different, right, and, and we didn't know the impact of the public safety fee increase as well, and so, if you're looking at 5% and 9% being the difference of about $3.50 versus $5, right, 7% is gonna fall right in, in between there, right, again, on average, and the, that 7%, essentially what that would do is that would, we would be able to kind of max out kind of that borrowing capacity that we have for all of those regulations that we need to be able to manage, and it would also be able to give us just a little bit of cushion in terms of kind of the what if, right, what if something happened? And again, there, I think there was, there was some pretty significant discussion within the group as well, is that 9% was a scary number, right, and 5% was a scary number too, just because of that, that what if, right, and so I think that that's really why the committee really talked a lot about, about 7%. Within that, that 7% recommended rate as well, we had some committee members who voted against that, right, because they, they felt very strongly about that 5%. So, that is the overall recommendation, I would, if there's other questions about that, or kind of the, the overall numbers, again, how does this impact the bill, I would probably defer those to finance director Piper, and so, I think at that point, at this point, I will stop sharing, sharing feedback unless there was something else that I missed from our committee members. No, I think you did good. Thank you.
Okay, Michelle?
We have received the proposal for the sheriff's office this year, and it's going up 5%, so that will mean a dollar on, every month on people's bills, it will go up a dollar.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions for Shelley on her report?
Do you, do either one of those rates affect the, the time to get us out of the moratorium issue, or is it just the borrowing capacity, just borrowing capacity?
I don't believe it, and again, I'm gonna defer to the experts in the room about, about the sewer and DEQ, I do not believe it, it impacts the time of the moratorium, but I think, as we all know, that rates increase for everything, there's all sorts of what I call, oh, shoot moments, right, that we have, this gives us just a little bit of flexibility, and doesn't run us like to the dollar of exactly how much, how much it is that we would need.
I was just, maybe to address some of your concerns, we're, we're heading for a target that we think we know, but the truth is, it could be less, it could be more, we really need to get the engineering report back that updates what we need to do to the current plant in order to understand what we're going to do. Also, we need to, you know, get the numbers for the different options we're looking at, because we're looking at doing a land application, sort of a wetlands approach to maybe treating the water for, for temperature, or we may be doing a different approach for that. Also, we may be connecting to the Metropolitan Wastewater District, or we might not be. So, these, yeah, these numbers may get adjusted as we go forward, I would expect them to be changing a little bit, so, yeah, but right now, this is what we expect, this is what we're projected, and we'll see how it falls out from there, but it, it may come down over the next years.
So, we're, we're still looking at about seven years with the moratorium?
Yeah, they've given us a, a drop dead date, what, what year is that? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I think it's about.
I remember 2031 being the number that was thrown out.
Oh, that's, that's, that's the growth for the city, we have to plan till the 2031 window, that's not when we're gonna be finished with the.
But there is a cutoff as far as the MOA, correct?
Right.
Do we know?
Yeah, we, it's written down, I just can't, off the top of my head.
More than, more than seven years?
It's about seven years. Yeah, and, you know, each thing in there actually has a pretty logical timeframe, so the first year, we had to do smoke testing, and we met that timeframe. The second year, we have to do camera inspections, we're working on that right now, but the timeframe has more to do with actually, you know, doing the work than anything else, so it just takes amount, that amount of time to get things done.
Thank you.
Nick?
You said the average bill was $139.81, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, and again, there's differences.
Yeah, a lot of variables, I just kinda wanted, well, I'm writing my notes, so I'll make sure I have the right amount, thank you.
And that would be different for the east side? The east side will not be seeing our numbers as part of this sewer system, because, yeah, those are.
Doesn't affect me.
Right, well, I just, in case somebody asked you, since you live over there, yeah, your sewer system rates are set by Emerald Valley, not by the city.
So, when you say 139 average, you're saying that's average sewer bill per month? Average total?
Total utility bill, so.
What you get for water, sewer, and tough, and?
Public safety.
Public safety, 130 average, okay.
Yeah.
So, you're saying that number would go up 425 a month, is kind of what I wrote down, halfway split?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, then we are on to Parks and Trees Advisory. Now, normal, we're gonna cover the naming of Second Street Park later.
Okay.
So, if you have any other reports from your committee?
Well, we reviewed the tree list, and we've got it down to just some spelling errors and a few things, and so we review that again in March to make sure it's all ready to go. And Stuart Samuels came in with a mock-up of the signage that we're gonna have at Garden Lake Park, and it's beautiful, it's like a poster size of three by six.
Oh, it's huge.
Three by whatever.
Probably six by something.
Anyway, whatever size it is, and it's, it's beautiful, it's well-done, and once that's approved, the plan is to have it, the whole thing completed and ready to be installed and reveal, and revealed at the Arbor Day celebration, because that's where the Arbor Day celebration is, we're planning on having it, is at Garden Lake Park.
Good.
Some of the birdhouses have been, most of the birdhouses have been, been installed, and they weathered the storm fairly well, there's some in Garden Lake Park, some in, in Holt Park, and there's some in the Cobalt, Cobalt Activity Center, and I haven't gone around to look at them, I should, but I will. I guess the Pollinator Garden is pushed off into next year, but, you know, things happen. We worked on the Arbor Day celebration, people, you know, people are signing up for things, and we're working on getting things completed by Arbor Day, and that's pretty much it, we're doing good.
Okay, Michelle?
I just have one more announcement, councillor Osborne doesn't necessarily know this, but we're at Tree City USA again, so we got.
Oh, right.
Very good, very good. Nick?
One question, I noticed that the, the bird houses was up at the, was it the center of, the little bike weigh station? Is there a chance that, is it finished colored? I noticed the white poles, is there any chance it painted, painted green or something more to the color of the landscape, or are they all gonna be like bright white and noticeable? Aesthetically wise, I just thought, man, that really stands out, and I didn't know if maybe the birdhouse could be whatever you guys wanted, but the poles maybe were more of a green or tan or something more to the landscape that were, that fitted in a little bit better, like you see some of the cell phone towers and the big power poles that turn into a tree, I, you know, it's a small request or a small ask.
We'll give you a tooth, a paintbrush and.
It's close, so I can, well, I go with a pen, I just, you know, ask for permission first.
Okay, Airport Commission?
Okay, there's so much to share, I'll try to keep it brief. So, we met January 31st, and we received a lot of updates, a lot, a lot of updates on the projects that are, are continuing on, they're in progress, core grants from last year that are related to that, like the security cameras, the bids are out, and as soon as they are all in, manager Humble will look at which company will install the cameras, and then there's that ham base station, they're hopeful to have their first work group meeting in February to choose an appropriate ham base station, they're gathering with some guys that really know about ham base radios, and they're gonna make a decision. And manager Humble has applied for the 2024 core grants, she's applied for a, it's gonna be a, a grant for the AIP Master Plan Project, that's gonna be a big one, we'll need all the help we can get for that, and that'll be a matching grant where the city will pay something, but it'll be very minimal to what it's going to cost. And then, another grant for some more EOC equipment, and so, of security enhancements, they're working on getting some electronic gating out there, and some airport signage, and some obstruction removal, and those grants should be awarded in February. And the big project, the runway, that project is complete, and they are waiting, the last thing they're just waiting for is that jet flyover that comes in and to dial in all the equipment so they could get it 100% operational, and they're supposed to give like a two-week notice before that flight check, so hopefully we'll, we'll all know when that's gonna happen. So hopefully, we'll all know when that's going to happen. And the, a quick update on the master plan. The RFP will be going out in June with the project starting in October once the FFA, the AIP funding is available. Okay, so then, the North Taxi Lane project. The airport engineer and airport staff are continuing to work with the FFA and the NMFS, National Marine Fisheries Service. If you recall, that whole thing with the salmon or whatever has kind of put a chink in that project. They're waiting to complete the necessary process, which is the study. And that study is going to cost about $50,000. But there is grant money available to pay for that. And luckily, the project is still moving forward. Normally, they would just put a halt to the whole thing. But they're able to keep working on it. So we should be breaking ground this summer to put in two new taxi lanes. And then there's the wastewater construction project that you guys have been hearing about for a while. The project is complete, and the main FBO building and hangar D1 are connected and utilizing the new system. Did you raise your hand? The next step is to work to connect the water portion of the project. And staff is working with engineers to complete. And also, Jim will be working with Water Rate Advisory Committee to figure out the usage to the users out there. So good news, they got it, but it comes with a price. And one, couple other things for you real quick. We got a really good report for the STEM program out there. And Mike Anderson is the Cresswell School rep, and he shared with us that those kids were able to get ahold of the big RC remote airplane. I don't know if you remember, they were trying to get it, and they got it. And all these, I should say kids, they're students, they're high school students. They're working on it, and it's like a 65-inch wingspan, and it's electric. And he says, it's just amazing. They're doing a great job out there with that. And Commissioner Orgoso stated that he had two wrecked wings that he would donate to the school to get their hands on that. And he was also, they can sell them, do whatever they want with them. And then there was a quick discussion about some event planning out there. The airport staff will be planning an open house at the airport at the conclusion of the runway, we're still, you know, all depending on that safety flight. And at the mayor's request, a ribbon cutting for the wastewater treatment project will be included with the runway open house. So there'll be more to come on that. And finally, we got into the new business. Jim Orgoso was elected chair for 2024. And then Airport Manager, we reviewed the charge that the mayor has given us, and just wanted to state real that the one was completed. That was the chair. And also, what was it, line four? Work with staff to post the most current version of the airport vision on the city's website. That has been completed. And then, so we have a March 20th, we have a work session scheduled to finish up the rest of the charge. And that is the conclusion of my report.
Thank you.
Yep, okay.
And I am personally thrilled with that wastewater system out there. With the conversations, they began at least 10 years ago. Probably a lot longer than that. So completion.
Wow. It is a huge deal for them out there to have that.
I'm sure it is. Okay, I do not have an ElCog report. I wanted to throw out to councilors, if any of you are interested in being the ElCog representative, I would be very willing to consider appointing you to that. And I'd have you talk with Manager Amber. At one time, our city was quite involved with ElCog. We're not so much anymore. So usually, when I go online and I look to see what the agendas are, there's very little that I will be reporting on to the rest of you. And it seems like it's always a conflict with something I have those nights. So I just haven't been attending meetings. But if any of you are interested in ElCog or being our council representative, please let me know, and we'll talk about that.
What nights are the meetings?
I believe they're Thursday nights. And you can participate in person or on Zoom. So there is that option. So if you're interested, let me know, and I'll shoot you some information. And I'd be glad to make an appointment. Okay, Lain Act. Shelley?
Well, gosh, I always have an update from Lain Act. So a couple of things. So we met actually just last week. And so we got a couple of updates. So one is we got an update from ODOT about kind of the cost of the storm response. And again, that was more than just Crestwell. But I thought that I would share that we had, that ODOT expended about $2.2 million in storm response and kind of repair of things and cleaning things up. And so, so anyway, I thought that was a, that was a big number that I wanted to share with you all. ODOT also shared that recently, they were a kind of a co-award between Oregon and Washington, received a $600 million award for interstate bridge and replacement programs. So I think that when they were, we talked about it during the meetings, it was mostly based up in some bridges up in the Portland area. But $600 million coming into Oregon and Washington is, again, nothing to sniff at. So I wanted to share that information as well. And then that the Safe Routes to Schools grants are open as well. So more information will be coming on that. We also, it was a very grant-forward meeting in terms of opportunities. So we also got information about the Great Streets 2.0 Grant Program that is coming open. And so I think that we were one of the finalists for the Great Streets, I guess 1.0, the first version of that program. And so I think if we were interested in working with ODOT to put together a competitive grant, I think that we learned a lot in that process. And so, and so we were, just to remind everyone, we were one of the finalists because we have some work to do on the jog, or there is some potential work to do on the jog. And so that would be an opportunity to be able to put forward some things and, again, realize some funds here in Crestwell. We also learned about the ODOT Carbon Reduction Program that is launching as well. And so if we have programs that would help reduce our carbon footprint, so maybe there's some sidewalks, maybe there's some bike lanes, maybe there's some streetlight potentials or replacing bus stations, things like that, that might be some opportunities for us that I think could be doable here in Crestwell. But information was shared about that as well. And then we also learned about the Connect Oregon 2024 Grants, which I think are going to be mostly applicable in terms of, for Crestwell, probably out at the airport. And my guess is that Manager Humble is already keenly aware of those deadlines and keenly aware of those grant opportunities as well. So like I said, it was a very grant-forward meeting. Next month, in March, we're actually going to be meeting in person as much as possible back at the ODOT offices. We're going to get a presentation from the Port of Coos Bay about the work that's happening there. We're also going to be getting a report or an update about the flooding that happens at Oregon 126 and Cushman. That's been something that has come up pretty often in our meetings. And so essentially, I don't know all the details of it, but there's a, you go underneath a railroad, over, anyway, that floods quite a bit. And then you can probably imagine, from a safety, safety perspective, if you can't get fire and, you know, folks through there, that could be pretty dangerous. So we're going to get an update on that. We're also going to get an update on the Oregon 126 Highway Safety Study, so out, kind of up the McKenzie, and the work that they've been doing there. So should be, should be an exciting meeting coming up in March. And then I will, I will pause because we have a lot of things on our agenda. Unless there's more questions.
Any questions for Shelley? Thank you very much. Okay, well, we're going to move on to item three, which is presentations. And tonight, I want to welcome Jason Stubb, who is the President of the Cresswell Chamber of Commerce, for your annual report. And you should have a copy of it here in front of you.
Thank you. So I put together a quick presentation. You do have a copy there for you, and it's also on the screen for reviewing as well. And then we'll open it up for some questions at the end. So a couple of things, people kind of understand maybe a little bit about what a Chamber of Commerce is, where it first established. You know, the first Chamber of Commerce was established, actually, in France in about 1599. The United States got on board with this. And the first Chamber of Commerce was established in 1912 by the president with the idea that we got to be able to do something to build commerce within our communities and for our people. Now, the Crestwell was established, the city itself was established in about 1872. But it came hard to kind of figure out when the Crestwell Chamber of Commerce was established. So I kind of have this range of dates. And it's because I've seen some things published back in the late 60s, early 70s. But when I looked at the Secretary of State website, there was a renewal in 1985. So it was prior to 85, but that was the last record that showed up on the Secretary of State website. So if anybody knows when the Chamber of Commerce in Crestwell was established, that would be great to be able to figure that out, to put that in our records and have record of that for us. But a lot of people kind of tried to figure out, what is a Chamber of Commerce? So a Chamber of Commerce really is an association or a network of business-minded people that are designated and designed to come together for a interest to try and protect and promote members of its organization. Now, it can, a lot of times, it's often made up of business owners or businesses that share a local interest in the area and the community. By the IRS designation, it's a 501(c)(6) organization, which is a membership nonprofit or not-for-profit organization, much different than a 501(c)(3). So it's not like we can give out tax deduction information, but really, it's a membership organization that works in an effort to try and be able to, on a membership basis, to promote organizations there. A couple of things about the Crestwell Chamber. Currently, we have about 100 members in the chamber. And that really ranges from a wide variety. It's not just business owners. And there's also community members who join the chamber as well. And as you can see from the list here, they're not all from Crestwell. They're from our surrounding metropolitan area as well. So we stretch all the way down to Cottage Grove. We go all the way up to the McKenzie, up into the Eugene and Springfield and the metropolitan area up there, even out to Veneta and across the areas there. So we have a wide range of area where we draw people into our community for different events that we do and activities. And a lot of that is because we're trying to build that and we're promoting our members here in the Crestwell Chamber. So a little couple of unique facts about the chamber is that we have a really small Board of Directors. We're kind of, some things that happened over the years since the pandemic, and we've kind of been in this rebuilding process that's there. So we're a small group of people that are trying to be able to make a big impact on what's in our area. One of the things about our chamber versus other larger metropolitan chambers like the Eugene and Springfield Chamber is we're very event-driven. And a lot of the things in those larger metropolitan areas, they're very advocacy-driven. So there are things like public policy, business advocacy, government issues, economic development, workforce, work-ready initiatives. Whereas they're all, they have big, large staffs, you know, of seven to 15 employees that they can assign to a specific task to, you're championing these different derivatives that are there. Here at our chamber, we have a part-time employee, and we have a Board of Directors of volunteers. And so that makes trying to be able to have that advocacy thing part of it very difficult to be able to do. Yes, it's a focus that we like to be able to be more on the advocacy side for the members of the chamber. But really, because of our size and because of logistics, we're really event-driven. And that's really what happens with us, is that we're event-driven because we have a contract with the city to be event-driven. And so some of the different things that we have is we have a very special funding arrangement, which we're going to talk a little bit about today to kind of give you a highlight of. But what it is, is we have our visitor center that we are staffing five days a week for four hours a day. And then we have tourism events where we're, have these events where we're trying to bring tourism into the Crestwell community. And that starts in May with our Mother's Day Garage Sale. And then we have our large Fourth of July Celebration. And then we have our Winter Lights Festival. And so those are the four different areas in which we're under contract with the city to be able to provide those events and resources for our community. And so a little bit about that funding, I kind of break this down a little bit about what the city provides to the chamber. The first one is what's called TRT or Transient Room Tax. This is the local tax that's collected based upon hotel rooms or short-term rentals like Airbnbs. So when you book that, it's all built in as part of the taxes and fees. That portion of that gets sent to the county or to the state, and then gets accounted for there, and then comes and trickles back down to the county, to the city, and then eventually a portion of that to the chamber. The other one is called the RTMP, which is the Rural Tourism Marketing Program. This is a program in the state and at the county level where funds are given to those municipalities to then disperse to rural communities to try and help increase marketing to their community to try and create excitement and drive more people to come to those communities that are out there. Currently, in the 2023 fiscal year, this accounted for about 63% of our annual budget for that. And that number is a little bit inflated for what was there simply because we had some catch-up payments that had happened that Jim and I had worked with to try and be able to figure out why we had some accounting discrepancies of where money had come from. And a lot of that was that they changed the process of the way this worked. And so it was, it's a lag of payments. So there were some payments that weren't received in previous years that were then caught up due to accounting errors that were then actualized on the budget in 2023. And of course, we have other revenues that come in more so than just those two areas. We have membership dues. And then we're fortunate to have some great sponsors in and around our community with members of the chamber and other corporate sponsors to be able to help provide some of these programs that we do enjoy in our community. So one of the things that, here's a chart that I created. And I kind of just, high-level numbers for you so you can kind of see what it actually takes to be able to run these events that we have in contract with the city. So in 2023, you can see that the TRT revenue that the chamber recorded was a little over $27,000. The RTMP was a little over $32,000, which created just a little over $59,000 of revenue between the two. And again, those are 2023 actuated numbers. Some of that was from revenue from 2022 that was then corrected and brought in. If we run the visitor center between rent and utilities and things like that, it was $5,400. Wages for our part-time employee and all the other expenses that go is just short of 26. Mother's Day, you can see, it doesn't take very much to advertise for Mother's Day, and there's not much that goes on for the Mother's Day event. But a lot of that is getting the map put together, which takes a lot of time and effort to be able to do that. But these are pretty much just marketing expenses for the Mother's Day event. You can see our big event there, Fourth of July, with a lot of, lot of moving parts in that and a lot of things. And as we all love to enjoy the Fourth of July, we realize that it is a very big event, and it does come at a pretty good price tag there. And then our Winter Lights Festival was just almost $3,400. So a total expenses last year to do our four things contracted with the city was $63,000 or almost $400, which if you look at that, that puts us at a shortfall for the year of about $4,200. And so when we look at how that works out is that, you know, we, things keep increasing in cost. And so we always are trying to find ways to be able to help offset that. And this year, we were fortunate to pick up a couple of extra sponsors for the Fourth of July event, which helped to offset that shortfall that was there. In 2024, our budget, we're looking pretty close to the same. You know, we do have about a $3,000 increase in costs that are going to happen. Some of those are effectuated as we have a rent increase at the visitor center for this year. We anticipate wages and employee expenses to stay the same. Just a little bit of bump in Mother's Day. The Fourth of July expenses have gone up because our contract with our vendor for the fireworks has gone up. And even in talking with other chambers of commerce, they had asked us about how we do fireworks and they do fireworks. And I was actually really impressed that our firework cost is a fraction of what their firework cost is. And I think for what we get out of a show, I'm really happy with the costs that go on with that. And so even a little bump over the last two years in that, that's going to be reflected in that. And then, of course, the other thing that everybody loves is entertainment. We love to go to the park and listen to people play. We started a new avenue last year where we had a special concert at the high school that people were able to sit and listen to and have food trucks while they were waiting for the fireworks to happen. So that was a great event that's there. Winter Lights, just a little bit of marketing expense that goes up, so a little bit of an increase that's there. You notice I didn't put in any income anticipated for 2024 because it's a big unknown. In talking with Jim, the county did anticipate a bump in the RTMP money that we will have. But again, the TRT money is totally- But again, the TRT money is totally dependent upon who rents rooms in our community and where that comes from. The way that our contract is set up for, with the city is that it's a percentage of money received. So in some of those times where we didn't receive money, it's because the city didn't receive the money, and then we had to go and try and do some investigative work to try and dig it out. So one thing that, in talking with some of the other Chambers that, that do have a similar structure that's set up, is that they are set up on a flat contract rate from the city. So whether, it's not so much it's a percentage, it's just we'll contract this much in this timeframe to be able to account for that. So then, that makes things really a lot greater for the Chamber to be able to try and budget accordingly. So if we know that we're going to get an excellent amount of flat amount dollar, then it makes it a lot easier than an unknown amount, trying to figure out where that's going to come from. So what does that mean for the future of the Crestwell Chamber? Not much. It's business as usual. We're still going to do the visitor center. We're still going to do our events that we're going to do. One of the things is that we're hopeful that with some changes that we made to our membership dues structure and with some corporate sponsors that we have, that we're hopeful to hire another part-time person, or maybe extend the hours of the person that's already there. Most of their work done right now is for visitor center activities, and so we would need to find other funding avenue to have them do Chamber or Chamber activities and beyond the community to build membership and things like that. But that is one of the goals hopefully for this year. Activities, still do the same activities. One thing is that we have been able this year to bring back our annual banquet that is actually going to be this Thursday at 5:00 at Emerald Valley Golf Course. And so this will be the first time that it's happened since the pandemic, and so we're kind of trying to figure out where people still are at and how many people are coming. And we were trying to figure out if we, if we could have 50 to 75 people, that that would be a great, that would be a great turnout for the first time back. Well, right now, I think we're about 120. So we've definitely exceeded our expectation. We're looking forward to have some great time and to celebrate some great people. We have three Future First Citizens that we're going to highlight from the high school. We have our Citizen of the Year, our Business of the Year, and then our Lifetime Achievement Award that we're going to be presenting to community members as well. And then the last thing is that, you know, we like to do events, they're fun, and we've found that Halloween is kind of one of those holidays that maybe doesn't get a whole lot of traction in a lot of places, and we thought it would be really fun to do something at the grade school. So last year, we kind of piloted a Halloween event where the grade school students would all get a, kind of a booklet, and they would get to go around to different businesses in the community and identify a picture and where they saw that picture, and so kind of give a little scavenger hunt for them. And then on Halloween itself, they would bring that booklet back to the Chamber office for a, for a goodie trick-or-treat pack. And so that seemed to get a lot of traction last year with it, and so we're anticipating that we're going to redo that again for this year. So that's a, that's a quick overview of kind of what the Chamber has been doing, kind of where we've been, where we're at, where we're going. And we're hopeful to still have support from the City Council again in the years to come. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you may have.
Okay, questions?
Who contributes to the RTMP program?
So the RTMP program is the Rural Tourism Marketing Program. That is done through the state to the counties so they can be able to drive tourism to their county. The county then funnels it to wherever they see fit. So mostly, it's to the rural communities. The big metro areas like Eugene and Springfield don't get any of that, but all of the rural cities in the county get it.
So how does the state collect that?
Jim, if he knows that answer. I don't know exactly how that's collected or funded, and I think it just goes into the general budget.
I'm curious, I don't see that on my paycheck. Is that a tax or where that comes from?
That's part of the taxes they receive for hotels.
Okay. So it's tied to the RT?
The TRT.
TRT.
Yeah.
I got one more.
Sure.
Who is our vendor for the fireworks?
It is Western Display.
Have we contacted Dan Tanner at Tannerite?
I have not. I didn't know that they did that. And we have used Western Display, that's who's been used for at least all the records that we can see in researching stuff.
They do a great job. I'm not going to say that they don't. We enjoy their fireworks. I just know Dan Tanner's local, he does do that, and I can help him out.
Okay.
So I have a question, and it might be Manager Amber, or Jason can answer this. So the Chamber receives a percentage of what the city receives. Do we, what is that percentage?
It's set by, actually by ORS, and it's...
It's 60 to the Chamber, and then we have 10% of the 70%. So 70% of your TRT has to go into tourism. So the Chamber gets 60% of our collections. We reserve 10% for any promotions that we want to do here at the city.
Generally for the airport.
Generally for the airport, drive people.
You know, print media and things like that. The, the amount that comes in is by statute, you have to spend a certain amount of it on tourism. You don't get a choice. The rest goes into the general fund.
So that our contract, because we don't do it as tourism, so we contract with the Chamber to do that?
Right. We contract with the Chamber to do our portion of the tourism, right? And it's a percentage because that's what it is in the law. If we did a straight amount, if TRT fell or RTMP fell, we would be responsible to make up the difference. So rather than do that, we think it's fair to do percentage-wise.
So then my other question. Where is the location going to be this year for fireworks? I know that that was a question that had been raised.
So initially, we had met to talk a little bit, when we met about this, we talked also about that. And I believe that our initial new destination, because it can't be at the high school because of the high school is, the school district's concerned about the liability with the new turf field they've put in, is that even though the field is outside of the fallout range, that it might still come into there and damage the field. So with initial discussion, the idea was thought that we were going to be able to place it at the water treatment plant.
Wastewater.
The wastewater plant, sorry, not water treatment, the wastewater plant, which is just to the west of the high school. And then people could still then be at the high school and on the football field, so that would be able to allow for a even larger potential viewing area so they wouldn't, we wouldn't have to close off the football field as we've had to do in times past.
So has that been decided or still in conversation?
We're willing to make it happen.
Okay.
Whatever.
And then our, our initial analysis of that with the firework company and with the fire marshal is that we would not have to worry about fallout area because the fallout area would be totally contained within the wastewater treatment area, and so there would be no additional having to water down the areas like we've had to do in the past at the school district.
Yeah, I think Cliff's intention is to put it out in the land strip that's between the lagoons, so anything would fall on the lagoons and be extinguished.
Okay, thank you. Stacy?
I think that's, you could probably answer this for me, Michelle. You were saying that we use some of the 10% to pay for advertising for the airport, and I get, I get so confused about the airport because I get told that they're self-sustainable, that all the money they make has to be spent on themselves, but then we spend money on them as well, and I'm really curious why.
Right. It's an enterprise fund, so it's run like a business. Unfortunately, one of the things it doesn't do is support itself, so we supplement the budget.
Oh, so the airport doesn't support itself?
That's the goal in an enterprise fund, is to be run like a business and support itself. But, and we're hoping that once we get the new taxi lanes in and we get more hangers in, it'll do that, but right now it doesn't.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much, Jason, and I hope your banquet goes very well this week. Okay, so we are to the discussion of the naming of the Second Street Park. So Counsel, we talked about this initially last month, and we said we wanted another month to look at the book, if you've got a copy of the book, to talk some more again, and then to decide on next steps. So the floor is open. Counselor? Nick?
I just like to thank you for giving us the book. It was super cool. I appreciate it very much.
Happy to do it. I, I think it's an important part of what you guys need to have access to, so.
It's neat that it comes, kind of feels like it's authentic with the way that it's written in the copies and the color of the papers, so it's pretty neat.
I like the idea from last time that if we did go the route with Robinette, that we also have Hughes in there as well, since they both donated land. Is that a possibility or?
We can call it whatever.
I would agree with you. I'd like to hyphenate that part, Hanson-Robinette or Robinette-Hanson, whatever.
Alonzo?
I'll go. Yes, the book was very informative, and after going through, I loved all these names, but after going through the book, I would also, was going to be my recommendation as well as they share that name, maybe in alphabetical order or whatever, HR Park, whatever you want to call it. I, I think that honoring those two gentlemen would be upstanding.
Shelly?
Oh, I was going to say, I, I too, the, the book was really helpful. I got to learn a lot about the history of Crestwell. And so while I did not read it cover to cover, I definitely focused in on all the parts where I think I was just personally intrigued. And then also, as I was thinking about the park and I was thinking about the history of Crestwell, I actually thought that all four names, that were the shortlist names, I think those were just great selections by the committee as well. I think that there's a lot of value, I think, in naming Calipuya. I think there's a lot of value in Blue Valley. And then I also thought Robinette-Hughes or Hughes-Robinette, I thought that that also made sense to look at, at hyphenating that as well. I was, I was just reminded about, you know, like cities start somewhere, and it sounds like Robinette and Hughes were the individuals who really started Crestwell and, and gave us, kind of gifted us Oregon Avenue as well. And so I thought that, I thought that was really, that really stood out to me as well. And then I also, as I was reading over the nominations for the naming as well, it really stood out to me that there were a number of citizens of Crestwell that also made that same, that came to that same conclusion, is that these are two, these were two very important individuals for the city of Crestwell that have not been recognized in, in other ways or in other areas. And so, you said, I liked all of the nominations, but those were the two that, or the Robinette-Hughes or the Hughes-Robinette, however that goes, was the one that really stood out to me as well.
Hi. I go back to honoring the Native Americans in this. They were, they were here first, and to me, they're more important than the people who came in and stole the land from them and killed them off and, and then began the city. So my vote would be for the Native American, the Calipula.
Calipuya.
Calipuya Park.
Okay, Stacy, you're the only one that hadn't spoken, and then I'll...
I know, it's so unusual, it's weird. So I, I'm really, I'm really strongly in support of Robinette, hyphened, starting with Robinette, because I said it over and over again, both ways, and it flows better to me, starting with Robinette, but I'm just, you know, I'm not that picky, but a little. I, I think that there's a lot of ambiguity when it comes to what we know about the Calipula, I can't even say it. And, and whether or not they actually settled here, from what I was reading, it sounds like more, they were, they were part, like, they, they were more outside the community, but also were here as well. So I'm not really sure how strongly I feel about tying that, just because there's, there's just, there's nothing definitive, in my opinion, really, about any of that. But, but at the end of the day, those are our founding fathers, Crestwell's founding fathers. Those are the men that, that created Crestwell, Oregon. So that's just where I stand.
Michelle?
Just an FYI, the person who dedicated the field for the airport, actually, the airport's named Hobby Seeken, and it shortened to Hobby. So he donated the land for the airport, the airport's called Hobby Field, we also call it the Crestwell Airport, but that's how that got its name.
Cool. Good fun fact.
Yeah.
So tonight, what we need to do, and I'm going to, I'm going to speak and then talk about process for a minute. So I like Robinette-Hughes for all the reasons that was mentioned. I also really like Hanson, because when I came to Crestwell in 1982, Ron was the city administrator. And as I got acquainted with him, I realized he'd moved to Crestwell to be a school teacher. The city had no real administration. He became the first clerk of the city, then the administrator. Oh, prior to that, he became, he was a city councilor, then he was the clerk, then he was a city administrator, and served in that role for 20 some odd years. Then after retiring from that, he came back on city council at some point and served again. During all those years, his wife was a school teacher at Crestland Elementary and then died tragically in a hiking incident a number of years ago with a friend, Southern Oregon. And for many, many of those years, Ron has been a stalwart on the Crestwell Kiwanis in volunteer opportunities. So, you know, my history in Crestwell, which is 40 years, 42 years now, Ron's always been there. He wasn't one who donated land, but he was one who gave of his life and so, and his years in so many, many ways. And it's interesting that many of our facilities here in Crestwell really go back to Ron. One of the ideas I came up with was, and it happens often, this is our Crestwell City Hall, but these are the McCloskey Chambers, named after Mayor Eddie McCloskey, who was our mayor for 20 some odd years. I thought about the idea of maybe naming the park, Robinette-Hughes, but naming the new water feature, the splash pad, the Hanson Splash Pad, because Ron was instrumental in water in Crestwell and in roads and all kinds of things. And, and knowing his wife, who taught my son elementary school, they would chuckle to see children out there laughing and playing in the water feature. So that's just a throw-out idea. So in terms of process, as I read through the naming process at afternoon, there's a timeline in here. Back on the back, the fourth page of our process, after the city council reviews the application, a notice of intent to name a city-owned property shall be posted in public places and published at least once in the city's paper record for a 30-day review process prior to city council decision. After the 30-day review period is completed, a public hearing shall be placed on the agenda of the next regular meeting of the city council. And then city council will make a decision regarding the proposed name at the same city council meeting. So the only question I have is that this is a process for someone who turns in an application to name something, but in this situation, we are generating the desire to name it. So do we follow this process? I don't have an answer to that question. It seems to me that the spirit of this, what we're reading here, is that we want the public to know we're going to be naming a park, and we want to give them 30 days' notice that it's going to be named, and then we're going to, and then we would have a public hearing so people can come and hear and, and give their input, and then the council would move towards a decision. So if, if we follow this process strictly, then it would mean we wouldn't be making a decision until the April council committee meeting. But I don't have, I don't know that my interpretation of this is the only way to interpret it. Stacy?
I am 1,000% a supporter in following the process that gives the public a chance to view things.
Michelle, do you have any thoughts on, on the resolution?
No. The city council, of course, can do whatever they like. It's pretty open to the city council how you name things. But you're right, this was a process that was set up for people filling out and submitting, which is what happened. So it might, I mean, I don't think there's any rush in naming it. We might name it in April and then have a ribbon cutting in June or something when the splash pad comes online.
There you go.
That'll be good.
Yeah, whatever it is.
That'll give us time to put a sign together.
Okay. So Counsel, are you ready to put this on the agenda for a council decision?
Yes.
Second question. We have four names turned in from our parks committee. Would we like to simply move forward with these four that they recommended, and then the council in the meeting will discuss and make a decision? Do we need to have any names particularly on the, on... Do we need to have any names particularly on the, on the action item? Or, yes?
Yeah, because we have to notice it.
Okay.
The name should go out to the public.
So in noticing it, I would recommend that we just notice the four names that were submitted from the parks committee. Michelle, you're giving me funny looks. Go ahead.
I, I think the city council should notice the name you intend to use. And I think you have kind of a unanimous, well, not quite unanimous, it's not unanimous.
I'd be willing to move in that direction if I'm the only one that thinks the Native Americans could, should be honored. I'm willing to move in the direction of everyone else. So it could be unanimous.
So Michelle, you'd recommend that in noticing this, we would notice to the public that we're going to be meeting to make a determination on the new name and the name that is under consideration is Robinette slash Hughes. Okay? Then my next question is the spelling of Robinette. As was submitted, it has an E on it. And looking at the book, as you noticed, it's E. But then they, they mentioned that at some point the E was dropped. And the applications we received said, part of the reason is that there are still members of the Robinette family living. So if they go without the E, how do we want to notice that? Clark?
Two things. I think it was vice versa. I think it was without the E. And then in the book, they noticed they added the E, but I'm not, I'm not 100% sure on that. And then I noticed in the book that there were two different spelling of Hughes and Elvin Hughes. So that was a tricky thing, too. So we'd want to be clear on how we spell Hughes.
Can we go back to tax records? Government tax records?
We'd have to go to the county and do the research. We don't keep those records here, but.
So in, in the book, page 87, there's a page copied from the Lane County records in which Hughes is spelled with an E, H-U-G-H-E-S, and Robinette is also spelled with an E at the end. Then on page 89, the note is sometime over the years, the spelling changed to Robinette without the E. So originally, both had the E. Hughes with an H-U-G-H-E-S, Robinette with an E at the end.
He also had a hand up in the audience.
Debbie?
Just a quick Google search, even has recent obituaries and things in Lane County and around Oregon with the Es. So I don't know if they're direct descendants or whatever, but you see that more common than without. So I don't, I don't know if that's helpful, but Google search adds to the confusion.
Stacy?
I mean, just for the simplicity of having a park with a name that people can spell from common knowledge, right? Robinette's spelled with an E most commonly. Maybe the fact that when they founded, or when they gave us the property, that's how their names were spelled then. I mean, if, if we're looking for a way to decide, these are just some, some ideas. I do appreciate, though, that if they have family, family members, it might actually matter to them as well, so.
Nick?
I would agree that we use what the book has, and if we can't reach out to the family. And that would be the, I think, the best way, if there's, it's possible to reach out to the family and ask how they'd like their descendants to, to be recognized.
Alonzo?
That would be my thought, if we go by the county record, the book, or if there's a surviving member of the family, ask.
I think there are still Robinettes in Crestwell. But the three people who submitted the application, I would guess, we could go back to them and ask for contact information or if they can contact and tell them that's our intention, but we just need help determining the E. Is that something you can do, since you probably have the contact information for these?
Sure.
Does that go with the Hughes as well? Because I think I heard there were some discrepancies in that spelling as well. So we could do the same with the Hughes?
If there are any Hughes surviving in our area.
I bet that it was a typo at some point, too. Some of these could have just simply been typos and we're putting a lot of stock into them.
Because if this is correct here, it's pretty clear here how it was spelled originally, and then it's the next page over.
Old school typewriters, that, they may have not wanted to back up and fix it.
Well, how about, Michelle, when you reach out, if you can ask them both questions?
Sure.
And, and because I believe that all three of the people who submitted these are members of the Crestwell Historical Group that meets in the museum here in Crestwell. So we could rely upon them to help us figure that out. How's that?
Yeah, sounds good.
Michelle?
And we want the historic spelling, then.
Yes.
Yeah. Unless the Robinette family is still here and says, well, we spell it without the E, and we would really like to not have the E. We have a member of the public. Chelsea?
Well, Michelle, I was just letting you know, we could always go on Arlet, too, wherever we know there was property, and we could look at a warranty or trustee.
There you go.
Okay.
Yeah, Chelsea will do that.
Well, I know Arlet is like, we know a property associated with the family.
Kelly?
I was just going to say, if we also move forward with saying that Calipuya was one of the finals of consideration as well, I'd also noticed, note that Calipuya here, like on the, on the memo, is spelled different than Calipuya in the, in the book as well. And so, you know, that's just another typo that, or interpretation that we might be, might want to look into.
There's a lot of different ways to spell Calipuya. But I was thinking, maybe you want to take the same sort of thought to Calipuya. We're putting in a pollinator garden, and that might be the nice.
That's a great idea.
Calipuya memorial pollinator garden. That might be something that they would like as well.
Yeah, I think that would make more sense.
Because you can, you can name whatever city facilities you like. I used to work for a mayor that used to name gutters after people.
It wasn't me.
It wasn't you, no, but, you know.
Okay, Stacy?
I just wanted to say to you directly, it's not that I don't want to honor the Indians that have settled our area. I'm just trying to look at, in my head, like, we've gone all these years without honoring the two men that actually gave us the property. And so for me, that, it just kind of trumped it, and I just wanted to make it super clear. Yeah, I'm just explaining myself, though, so that nobody goes away thinking that, that I'm anti-Indian or anything like that, so.
I just don't think our Native Americans have received the honor across the country that they deserve.
I do understand where you're coming from.
Michelle?
I think it's interesting that not even the streets are named after them. I mean, generally, your founders would be in the street. But we did name one street Mazama, which is a Calipuya word. So we do have a Mazama street. That's the street that goes from Baldob, so.
They didn't have, they didn't have written that language, so they didn't spell it anyway. We did just have to decide on what the most common, maybe their ancestors, what they would like, how they'd like to have it spelled.
We can probably check with the University of Oregon. I think the, they have a ceremonial house there. And yeah, we can probably find out the correct spelling.
There's many in Calipuya Creeks. I've been up a handful, two or three different ones I know in Logan. And so they're, they're all spelled the same way with like a Y.
Oh, are they?
Different than like the school.
Okay.
Okay, Stacy?
Can we, can we, for the names we don't select this time, can we carry them forward and use them again, or do, or we can?
You can do, you can do whatever you like.
Okay.
This, this naming policy is basically what we've got for naming. And, and it came out of an interest number of years ago to name something, and we realized we didn't have a policy. So we created one, and it's really applicant-driven, unless the council decides we want to name something. And then this, this was actually council-driven, if you remember, and we decided to pass it to the Parks Board to generate names. So, Michelle?
I think the only two parks that have city council official names are Harry Holt Park and Garden Lake Park. So you still have the Bicycle Wayside, we just call it that. We call the Pump Track Grasslands, because that's the street it's on. We call South Second Street that, because that's where it's located. And then we have.
Cobalt Building?
We call, it's the Cobalt Activity Center. So that's just what we call it. But all of these things you could name with an official name if you wanted.
So we could name that water feature?
Pocket Park. The Pocket Park has a, yeah, you can, yeah, however you like.
Okay, so are we ready to put this on the docket for the April council meeting? And it will be noticed as soon as Manager Amber confirmed the spelling?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Done deal. All right, we move to release deed restriction on the Old School House, and that's Manager Amber's report.
Yeah, thank you. The Old School House used to belong to the city. There was a group of citizens who were very excited about it and wanted to see the city improve it. The city did an investigation of it and said, well, that's really expensive. We, you know, and it would take a lot of time and a lot of effort. And we encouraged them to think about an alternative. So they created a 501(c)(3), and we said, why don't you take over the schoolhouse as a project? And they did. We transferred it over to them with a grant of $50,000. That's all the city has invested in that building. And so they did the work. They got it to where it's very nice and usable now. And they now want to transfer it to somebody who will manage the building. So they believe they found a manager, and that is Crestwell First, our community foundation. And so we went back and the community, community foundation took a look at the deed that did the transfer and found out that there's a reversionary clause in that deed that says if the Heritage Foundation ever ceased to exist, the schoolhouse would automatically revert to the city. This is a problem, because, you know, 50 years from now, the Heritage, Crestwell Heritage Foundation might cease to exist, and that may be being used as a bed and breakfast, or we don't, we don't know what its history will be or what its future will be. And we don't really want it to come back to us at this point. We feel that, you know, it's been invested in by the community. It should be a community asset. And so we would like to take off that reversionary clause. I would like to take off that.
Okay. So only thing I would add is, I went to the open house last week and I was involved in the process a number of years ago when I came on, and, and I realized the building was sitting, 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 and just falling apart. And the city didn't have the funds or the staff to really do something with it. So we had a conversation, decided we should tear it down, sell it, or find somebody who wanted to do something with it. And that's when there was an uprising in the community and articles in the Chronicle, and people stepped forward and said, we'll fix it up. It's a treasure for us.
Yeah, it had a big, huge boulders set underneath it to keep it up off the ground. That was its foundation. It needed some work.
So it's, you know, it's ready to be used. It's ready to be used. But the Heritage Foundation said, that's really not what we do. We need someone who will now make it a community asset in terms of manage, the use, collect the fees, that kind of thing. So that's where, there, and the, the president is of the, of the, president of the 401, president of Crestwell First is now Jenny Donnelly, but, but the person who's really driving this is Sue Ludo. Who, if you know Sue from her years at the library, when Sue sets her mind to something, she does it and does it well. And she really has a vision for how to use this for the community, for an open space that can be used. So that's where we're at. So council, questions? Stacy?
What would this mean? What, at the end of the day, if, if it's not given back to us, do we have any risk of it ever not belonging to the community?
If it got, if Crestwell First wanted to sell it, they could sell it to whomever, yeah. Or pass it along or whatever. It would just mean we're not part of the, the process.
Are we in some way an owner then?
No, it's just a reversionary clause. And the reason why we did it was because we weren't sure that the, the group was going to be as successful as, as has been. I mean, there's hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants that they have received to improve that building. And that's a pretty heavy lift. And to their credit, they did it. And I think it should be up to them as to where it goes next, because as the mayor said, we, we were going to, you know, let it sit there until it fell apart. So it is a community resource. It is on the historic register, so it will be protected that way.
Okay.
But we did give them $50,000 of tax payers.
We did give them. We did give them a grant of $50,000 to kickstart their, their program.
What was the total budget, you know?
I don't know, but it's been years. I could, yeah, when I was looking through the file, we did an inspection. And expect, the inspection was like, you guys just need to tear this down. And, yeah, they've done a lot of work. They've replaced siding, they've replaced windows, they brought it up to ADA, they fixed the floor.
They put in an ADA bathroom.
Put in ADA bathroom, they put in the ramp, they painted it, they've, yeah, they've done, they've taken trees out of the lot that it was on. Yeah, they've done a lot of work.
When they began, they didn't really have an association particular. So one of the first issues they faced was, how do we even ensure this? Because they didn't have any, they didn't have any resources for just ensuring the building or just going in and turning on lights to beginning work. They had nothing. They were just community members who wanted to save it. So $50,000 is really designed to say, okay, now you kind of have a window of time you can start working. And if it doesn't happen, it'll come back to the city, and then we'll move forward with whatever. And if it does happen, and, you know, amazingly, it's happened.
Yeah, it was unrestricted dollars, so they could use it for insurance. They could use it to pay their water bill. They could use it, you know, we were just thinking that when it started up, they were going to have some fees, attorney fees, for their 501(c)(3), you know, all the various sorts of kickstarting fees they would need some help with because they didn't have any money at the beginning. But then, yeah, they were, they, they did really well. They did a really good job.
I like your idea, just with the $50,000 that we taxpayers put in, I have a hard time just giving that out. If there was a way to structure where they keep it, but ultimately, if they were to dissolve that somehow, that comes back to Crestwell for Crestwell to decide what it would like to do. I don't know if that's possible, or if that puts a big old wrench in your.
Yeah, it, it messes up the title, because whoever owns it in the future doesn't really own it. Because at any time that the Heritage Foundation would dissolve, they'd lose it. They'd automatically lose their investment.
They can't put it into like a trust or something?
Well, we need to do something about this reversionary clause.
Could we create a new contract with Crestwell First and in that put a reversionary clause? Where if Crestwell First ever dissolves, then it comes back to the city?
I kind of like what Counselor Smith said, maybe something along the lines of a trust. That, that might be a lot more fair than the reversionary clause. I worked for the, I ran into these on the coast, and they were just nightmares to deal with. Because a family would donate the, the land for, to build a school. We had a situation. And the school was closed, got closed because it was no longer up to code. And a group of artists wanted to come in and put in galleries and put artwork in, or their art rooms where they could make art. They wanted all that, their studios. And so we tried to take over the school from the school district and convert it. The problem was, the family had a reversionary clause on it that said if it ever stopped being a school, it goes back to the family. Well, there were about five or six generations that occurred between the time the land was donated and the day we were standing there. And we had to contact hundreds of people who had a $5 interest in this land. And it was a nightmare. Eventually, it was done, because there are always people who are willing to do that kind of heavy lifting. And, and it worked, but it was a nightmare.
So do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, I recommend that we take off this reversionary clause, and you could direct us to see if we could work with Crestwell First to do some sort of agreement that honors the city's contribution and keeps it in the public domain for as long as possible. Sounds good.
Stacy?
Yeah, I think probably the only way I would support reversing that. So, so I like that idea. I'd like to see what that looks like.